I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Reverend James McGriff from Bethel A.M.E. here.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today with thanksgiving for your many blessings. This facility into which we are now in is just a testament, oh God, of your goodness. And Father, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support in this meeting. Help this board to engage in meaningful discussions as they continue to plan for the new school year. We pray this board will grow closer as a group as they work for the good of our schools. Father, fill us with your grace, Lord God, as decisions are made that might affect the students, the staff, the faculty, the alumni, and friends of the Putnam County Schools. Continue to remind us by your spirit that all that is done here today, all that is accomplished is for the purpose of the truth, for the great glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much Reverend. Our board, in the past, when a member has wanted to participate in the meeting remotely, could you turn it on?
Yeah.
Or just show me how to do it once we're done. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Have we got you Terry? Hello Terry? Well, we have to vote anyway before we get them on there, it doesn't matter. I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Wright to participate in the meeting.
I so move.
Motion second, any discussion?
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed no carries for zero. Okay, you there Mr. Wright?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay Terry, the board is just approved to allow you to participate in the meeting fully via telephone.
Thank you very much, and it's good to hear the bionic woman back in her seat.
Yeah, not potato head huh? Okay, we have done the pledge and the invocation, I'd just like to remind everybody to please silence your cell phones during the meeting. The first item on our agenda is a presentation by Mr. Charles Jenkins, our Director of Informational Services.
And we're going to postpone that to the next meeting unfortunately. He was taken to the hospital today in Gainesville, and when I have an update on him, I'll let you know, but we weren't expecting that, and so he's not able to be here.
Prayers for him.
Absolutely.
Okay, next is Mrs. Regina DeFranco to speak to the board regarding her concerns about transportation in the Crescent City area.
My name is Robert DeFranco, I'm a husband and she is not a crew yet, so I'm...
If you can proceed, that would be great.
She's given me permission.
Oh, she asked at you.
Okay, I'll try to move through this as quickly as possible. My name is Robert DeFranco, I'm not sure, I've met some of you here. I'm President of the American College of Applied Science in Crescent City. We're a small college, we do animal science and behavior graduate undergraduate degrees. I'm also Executive Director of the nonprofit Florida Center for Behavior Analysis. I'm a behavior analyst, I work with kids and adults with emotional, intellectual, and developmental disabilities, I work with ARC over here a lot. And I'm also on the Animal Services Advisory Committee with Chip Leibl, so. Last year, I'm recently married, and I have a stepchild who's seven, and I enrolled him in some of the childcare centers in Crescent City, and I noticed that they were very at capacity, and it was very difficult to get him in there. So, my wife and I formed an organization, a nonprofit community organization called Steppingstones Learning and Behavior International. We were licensed by the Department of Children and Families in March, and we currently have about forty children in the facility, and we provide childcare and VPK from three months through five years, and also after and before school. And so, I'm going to have some points here that I could make about the importance of childcare centers, I suppose you all know that, but you know, in the old days, before there were licensed centers, and there were, you know, accreditation and such, you know, children would go to school, and in many cases, they were ill-prepared. I know I was when I was five, because I was an only child, and so, we teach them not only the academics, but the behavioral skills that's necessary to get into school. As a professional who works with children with behavioral problems, I can tell you that, you know, when something goes wrong, I mean, if they hit somebody, or they're inappropriate in some way, they're disturbing the class, in many cases, you know, there's a system and they're suspended, and we all know that, you know, the kids want to get out of school anyway, so they're reinforced, and the parents end up becoming punished. Parents in our community who are low-income, they have to work, and it becomes a real problem. So, we feel that we prepare, have a great service for the school system, because we prepare these children as best as we can to enter the schools and be, you know, successful. So, around April, we started hearing rumors from families, from some of the people in the schools, like Middleton Bernie, that the Transportation Department of the county was going to cease dropping off and picking up children at the childcare centers. We don't know why that would be, I mean, it's a system that's worked for a long time, I'm not aware of any incidents, and it seems to me that it's more economical for the Transportation Department to drop off ten children at one place than make all the other stops, not only for economics, but for safety reasons. And the families rely on us to take care of these children, so they don't become latchkey kids, you know, and we do our best. So, we heard these rumors, and we contacted the Transportation Department, and we didn't get any straight answers, and so, we went ahead and we called the district, and we spoke to Mr. Roach, I believe, and he was very nice, and he understood, but we didn't get any answers. And here we are about two weeks before school is starting, I think it's two weeks, and we don't know what's going on. And, you know, if we had to purchase school buses and insurance, commercial insurance, and drive train CDL drivers and such, it would be very difficult for our nonprofit center and the other centers in our community to operate, and then this would make it very difficult for us to handle the after-school children. We work on very thin margins, I believe a hundred percent of our families are subsidized by the government, either with the federal meal programs or Episcopal Children's Services that helps, you know, to pay the fees. So, we're working in very small margins, and if the transportation was ceased, I'm not sure how many of us can continue to operate. And so, I'm here to ask you, and by the way, I've gone through the Florida statutes, and I'm sure the attorney is familiar with these, 402-26, about legislative intent to promote growth and stability to childcare industry, to help children who are traditionally disenfranchised from society, and if there was a denial, would take away their legal right to choose a higher-quality facility via support services and linkages with other programs to fully meet childcare needs of this population, hence forcing them to choose a mediocre facility versus a higher-quality one due to selective busing. So, I mean, everything I can see from what we hear from our families with the legislative intent is that we provide these services, and we can't do it if the services are stopped. And again, we don't understand why, because we have not seen a problem. So, I'm only coming here and bothering you about this, because we don't know what's happening, and it's two weeks before school is starting.
Okay, Mr. Roach, would you and Mr. Simons come up please?
Sure.
I think this was started years ago, you know, we try to be as accommodating as we can, but stopping at daycare centers was never part of what the law required us to do, and if you stop at one, you have to stop at all of them, it's not, that is just not humanly possible for our Transportation Department. But Mr. Roach and Mr. Simons, who is our Director of Transportation, has been working on these issues, and I'm going to let them respond.
Thank you. Yes, I've had several conversations with Mr. DeFranco since probably April or May. I tried to explain to him that we normally set the bus routes July, and those are temporary because we have to make adjustments. Unfortunately, we just found out in the last week and a half, two weeks ago, that Miller is now a bottom-three-hundred school, so we had to add additional time, which meant we had to go in, and it's on your agenda today, and completely restructure the starting times, which meant we changed bus stops, bus schedules, and everything, and that's part of the reason why. But I'm also here to say that our job is to transport children from their house, or stop near their house, to school and back, every day. Recently had a request from a parent in Palacca to change the bus stop to his barber shop, so we could drop their child off, and he didn't have to leave work. We cannot accommodate everything, and Mr. Simons and I have gone over this several times, we don't want to stop it. And here's the other issue, we don't know if there's going to be five children, or twenty-five children. If we pull up to this stop with a sixty-five-passenger bus, and there's already fifty-nine kids on it, we're only going to be able to put six on that bus, and the rest of them are going to have to get to school somewhere else. We can't put seventy-five kids on a sixty-five-passenger bus. And I believe, and Mr. Simons correct, we don't have multiple seventy-seven-passenger buses on the South End. How many do we?
No, I think we have five, and we do not have any spares that are seventy-seven-passenger.
I have a question, just to clarify in my mind.
Sure.
Are we talking about daycare centers babysitters?
Yes.
Versus pre-K?
Yes.
So, we're transporting pre-K, but not babysitter facilities?
Yes. Let me just say this, in Palacca, as I know, we're not transporting?
Oh, we have pre-K centers.
Oh, no, just at schools.
Just the pre-K. We've got pre-K at our elementary schools.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Not private pre-K.
No. Let me say this, all the daycares who service Palacca have their own vans, they come to the school, they deliver them, and they pick them up. So, I'm just saying, if it was fiscally possible, and we had the extra drivers, and we had the extra buses, and here's another issue, if some of those children live their established residences within the two-mile limit, we don't get any money for transporting those children, only for the ones, so we'd have to go to daycare and find out which ones live outside of two miles, which ones, then we have to pick and choose, are we going to transport them all, are we only going to transport the ones we get FTE for? So, under my direction today, I told Mr. Simons, I think we discuss it, maybe get it on the agenda for a later date, and actually have a vote on it whether or not we do this, I don't know. I understand the hardship they have, but I also understand a private enterprise, most of them in Palacca provide their own transportation.
Right, and unfortunately, if we do it for one, we're going to be open to having to do it for every other daycare.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have you been providing for the other centers, the future little learners and grandmas?
In the past.
Okay, how long has that been for?
I know... Honestly, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who set those up and the guidelines that they were followed, but I know there are some issues that I've learned, and we are working on those in reference. Under two miles, there are some things in certain areas that are going on, but we are looking to address them, and that's where this first conversation started. Because we have students in other areas that live within two miles that are walking, and those parents have complained and questioned, say, "Why can't we get a bus?" We have not done that because of the guidelines through the state, and we don't have enough buses and enough people to go to every single area to pick up those students. So, there's probably going to be more changes coming, and probably more upset people as we go through and look at this process and reference stops, but we have to be consistent. And as these issues have come to light, and we have researched them, then, you know, we will be making changes.
Okay, I still don't understand, the question I asked was, how long have you been providing transportation for the childcare centers? And by the way, this is, we're talking three months of age up until, we do pre-VPK, okay?
Right, so it's just for VPK?
But these are for the, really, the before and after-school children. These are children that will go over to Milton Bernie in the morning, you know, the parents will drop them off at six-thirty, because they have to go to work. This bus would normally come by the other centers and pick them up and take them to school, and then at the end of the day, rather than taking them to the house, they would drop the group off at the childcare center, you know.
So, it's not just VPK students?
Right, right, and, you know, we have the programs. So, how long have you been...
I've only been director for two years.
Mr. Roach, do you know?
So, prior to that, I don't know how many years.
Mr. Simons and Mr. Roach, let me just say, there is nothing in law, in Florida law, that says we have to do anything with daycare centers. If those children are coming to your daycare center, then it would be your responsibility, I would think, to get them to the bus stop. That's why we have bus stops set up. We do not have enough buses or drivers to accommodate what everybody wants. Most parents want door-to-door service, they would like us to pick their child up at the door, and deliver them to the school, and return them to their home. I wish we could do that. That has never in history ever been done anywhere, unless you're a private school.
Well, that's not the issue though, I mean, the issue is that they have been dropping off to the other childcare centers.
But we've been doing it as a kindness, and we're getting to the point, we just can't do that anymore. There is nothing in law that says that we have to, and it's gotten to the point that we don't have enough buses or drivers, and it's costing us a great deal of money, and you are getting that service for free. And most of the daycare centers have their own vans.
Okay, well, in Crescent City, they don't, and when you say that we have, we just opened our, and this is a nonprofit center, we just opened in March, okay, so we've never ever had this service before, okay, and we were just asking for the same service that was being provided to the other centers. So, the position now is that there is going to be no more transportation to any childcare centers in Putnam County, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Simons?
I'm...
That would be my...
I'm going with the two-mile, and it doesn't matter if it's a daycare, a parent, where they live two miles, if you're under two miles, it's the parent's responsibility to get the student, the child to school.
Or the daycare.
I would be happy to do that with every single student in every single area of the county.
Unless the law has changed, there are certain exemptions, like hazardous walking conditions, things like that, but years ago, we used to drop off at centers, after-school care centers.
Well, that was as recently as this year.
Well, I mean, I don't remember that, but I know that years ago, we did, and it was a very big expense to the district, and it puts a lot of responsibility on us, because sometimes one of the children might not get off the bus at the right stop, or they, it's not recommended anymore, and I would have to follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Other school districts do not do that, they never have done that. It was, we're a small district, and we've tried to be accommodating over the years, but it gets to the point when you don't have enough buses and enough drivers, or enough money to fund something like that, you just can't do it, it's just not feasible.
Yeah, I'm just having a problem wrapping my brain around that, I mean, we're talking about one stop versus...
No, if we do it for you, we've got to do it for everybody. We can't just choose you.
Well, there are only three daycare centers in Crescent City that are large, and then some of them are home daycare centers, and they drop off at the corner anyway for them. But the three commercial ones, Future Little Learners, grandmas, and our Steppingstones, we're the only three.
But you have to understand, anybody can start a daycare, anybody can do that, I mean, we would be accommodating people all over the place, and that's not our job, and it's not the law. Now, certainly, if we had the drivers, the buses, and the money to do that, I would be more than happy to. My concern is children, but at some point, the parents have to take responsibility for their children. We can't do everything, I wish we could. Our Transportation Department is funded by the number of students who ride those buses, but the funding is not enough to do what you're asking, for us to pick up and drop off every day at every daycare in Putnam County.
But again, we have to be...
Excuse me, I'd just like to say, in addition to that, the funding we receive is half of what it costs us to transport the students. Also, we are in the business of educating kindergarten through 12th grade students, that's what we're supposed to be doing. And while my heart goes out to working parents all over the country, because I was one, I was responsible for getting my kids to babysit. I would like to know how many daycares we do provide transportation for, or have been.
And Mr. DeFranco, I think, especially Mr. Roach has been down to this area, he knows it's, he worked there, he understands the situation with the poverty-stricken families, they are in the furneries, they're working you, we, every one of us would rather those kids be in your facility than latchkey kids, absolutely. And I know that in the past, when there's availability on the bus, on a seventy-seven-passenger bus, when you have ten extra seats, and that daycare, grandmas, or whatever, has ten students, and of course, we would do everything we can, but if it's expected, and it's an entitlement, it's not, we don't have the ability, we can't send another bus out so that Steppingstones could have every single student. And I know that in the past, I mean, I completely am a advocate for a center that would tutor and help these kids, and give them something to do, rather than going home to an empty home, and that's our goal, and I feel like whenever we can make those accommodations without spending, I mean, we can't, there's no way we could purchase another bus, we can't have an extra route.
And we're not asking for that. Again, it's been a past practice, from what I understand, many, many years, that the school system has been providing transportation to the centers.
And I've seen it around everywhere, I've sit behind it.
In Crescent City.
Well, even in East Palacca, I know we do it, I watch it, and so, I know it happens, because there's room on that bus. But the problem is, what happens when you have thirty participants that want to get on the bus, and that bus...
Since it's been a past practice in the other school, with the other centers, has that been a problem? Have you had buses that you couldn't run because of that, so it has happened?
Yes, may have been overloaded, and we've had to send additional buses whenever we have them finish their route, come and go, yes, we have done that.
All right, so, then, it's the decision, then, I would imagine, that all of the childcare centers in Crescent City are no longer to receive bus transportation? Because, again, we're new, we're nonprofit, and we're just trying to figure out what's happening.
And I don't think it's been a set standard, because we're doing whatever we can to get as many kids that need to go to the centers, to make sure they're an adult-supervised setting, because that's our goal. But if it becomes so overwhelming, and we have to stop at all, because we want to keep it fair, the board wants to keep it as fair as possible, but we cannot afford the expense of a new bus, so...
And we never asked for a new, are the centers within two miles, or not, are they outside of two miles?
I think they're probably within, close to it.
Middleton Bernie is the school that most of the children go to.
Okay, and you're located on, you're on the old...
We're on South Summit, next to the Napa Auto Parts there. Little Learners is in the old video building over there in the middle of town, and Grandma's is off...
They probably walk to Miller from that side, but you would be within the two miles from Milton Bernie and Miller Intermediate?
I've never measured it.
I'd be about within two miles.
But the key is this, again, are we going to tell the kids who go to the daycares, who live within two miles of where we're supposed to pick them up and drop them off, that they can't ride?
Right.
Then the ones who live outside of the two-mile range, are we going to have to come up with a list and say, "You can ride, you can't, you can ride"?
But you have that list anyway, don't you?
Well, yes, we do.
Okay, so, why is that a problem?
But here we go. It is a problem.
And you've got kids you can't transport.
If you have two parents, and you have to look in the eye and say, "The school's going to transport your child, but they're not going to transport yours",
How are you going to get them to school?
Then we're going to have an issue.
But you do that anyway, don't you?
We have an issue, okay? Well, you know why, because...
If someone lives, you say, live within...
You already know.
We're dropping them off at a bus stop, we're not dropping them off at a daycare, okay? And again, I'm going to say this, we're in the business of transporting children to a location nearest to their house, to school, and from the school to a location nearest to their house, okay?
No good deed goes unpunished. When you try to help, and then it gets to the point you can't help anymore, everybody gets all bent out of shape. This is not our responsibility to transport to your center. I wish we could. I don't see how it's humanly possible, and it's not in the law that we have to do it.
Okay, well, I thank you, again, it's only humanly possible, because it's been going on for ten years plus, but if it's going to be changed now, I will go back to our community in Crescent City and advise all of the daycare centers that transportation will no longer be provided, and then we're going to have to see, because if we can't afford to create these buses, then we're not going to be able to service those before and after-school children. That's a lot of kids, and it's a lot of families it's going to impact. But thank you, thank you.
Is the problem getting them from school to daycare, or is the problem getting them from daycare home?
The parents pick them, parents drop them off in the morning, six, six-thirty, they go on their long journeys to work, they're in classes and such, snacks with us, and then they go off to Milton Bernie, or whatever. At the end of the day, they return to us, and then their parents pick them up until seven o'clock at night.
Before you opened your center, how were they getting to Middleton Bernie?
They were being transported by your buses to the Future Little Learners and the Grandma's centers.
So, you are...
Up until the spring of this year in school.
You're an additional daycare.
We're a new one, yes.
Okay, so now, one more has come on, so now, instead of two, we've got to transport and pick up from three. Do you not see the problem here?
It's hard for me to see the problem, only because it's one stop versus ten.
Is there a bus stop in vicinity of these particular daycares? Terry, are you familiar with these daycares, and where they're located? And is there a bus stop in their vicinity, any of them?
His vicinity?
Yeah, and his in particular.
One of my major problems with his vicinity is that he is located where there is a turn lane that goes in between the two lanes, and it's against DOT regulations to make a bus stop there.
Right.
Well, excuse me, we have a center, I could show you photos, but we have a, if you look at this turn here, this round here, this oval, you can come in, and the entire bus...
No, sir, we have state law we have to follow, and we're not allowed to do that.
But they go into the parking lot of Little Learners, do they not?
No.
Where do you drop off, on seventeen?
Yes.
Well, then they could stop on seventeen, we're right, short walk to the curb.
Our bus doesn't travel in that area. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Our bus doesn't travel in that area when it leaves Middleton Bernie, it's heading towards the Volusia County line, they're on the other side of the road, so they would have to cross the turn lane and the other lane of traffic, and that's against DOT regulations.
It's a four-lane right there, right.
It's considered a three-lane highway right there, and that's against DOT regulations. The driver would literally, and as Mr. Roach explained, if we had, already had fifty-something kids on the bus, and we had a sixty, the bus was loaded to capacity, she would have to take all your children on the entire route with her, which is approximately forty-five minutes, so she would basically be the daycare for those children that entire time, and they would be her last stop.
I have to understand the logistics of that.
On that side, on the door side of the road.
Are we at the end of the route?
You would be, yes, sir.
So, if the bus made a three-point turn around three blocks, real quickly, you could come right...
And look at the time that's off the route.
So, we can't get the transportation because of where we're located?
Yes, sir.
So, it's not about a full bus?
And there's not a stop, there's not a stop.
The bus is full, the bus already has fifty-five students assigned to it.
So, is it only our daycare center that's not going to have transportation, or is it all of them?
That is a decision, Mr. Roach and Mr. Simons. I'm just the route coordinator, I do as the...
And you're new, if we've been doing it for the others, that doesn't mean we have to do it for you, and if we do, then that means we have to do it for everybody in the county, and I'm telling you, it is not fiscally responsible to do that, as much as we would like to. And those children that are coming to you, if they live within two miles of Middleton Bernie, we don't get paid for transporting them. So, we're bringing them to you, and that costs us money, but we're not getting paid for it, and if you're not going to pay...
One of the things that we're just trying to establish is that there's equity.
Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think superintendent, we're just sort of finally hitting on it, unless there is a state statute, or a school board policy dictating how we transport children to and from, or whatever, dealing with daycares, then we're not bound to any behavior or action in that area, nor are we bound to any consistency. Now, that may not be palatable to some, but it's a fact. The board can pick and choose based upon its impact, you know, each situation's impact on the board, you know, negatively or positively, how we engage in transporting these students. So, you know, I don't think, and Mr. Simons sort of spoke to this, but I don't think we have a one-size-fits-all policy. So, we can choose to transport to some, and choose not to transport to others, if we deem it a negative financial impact on the district. So, I just wanted to say that as a point of order, I'm not weighing in one way or the other on what we should do necessarily right now, because I know this is just a presentation, we're not taking any action on it. we're not taking any action on it, but, since there is no really clear policy saying that, we, we can be discriminatory, be that good or bad. Thank you.
My recommendation.
Okay.
Just one second.
I, I would just say that, you know, the, the board's goal is to be as fiscally responsible as possible for the districts so that the board protects taxpayer dollars. There may be some circumstances where it is fiscally responsible for the board to drop off at certain locations or not at others. For sure, Florida statutes require that we have means of transportation from a location nearest to the home, to the school. Outside of that statutory framework, it becomes a, a reasonableness test. Is it reasonable for the board and the district to determine that it makes good financial budgeting decisions to either drop off at a daycare or not? It's not that the board is trying to pick favorites, it's just how can we best be stewards of the, the money that the taxpayers entrust us with? There may be a way in the future, based on other bus routing or students who ride the bus, that we can accommodate your location. But from what I'm hearing now from the folks who are in, in charge of this, is that for this year, the way that the, the state is requiring certain schools to be open at certain times, the routes, how a bus is filled or not filled, based on how it would turn around and these other, there are a lot of other factors, a lot of other pieces to the puzzle that we have to consider. So in the totality of circumstances, the, the administration has made a decision in this respect that it's not feasible, based on the hand that we have been dealt by the state, and how we must transport our students. But I'm willing to work with you from the law, if the board gives me permission, if, if you have any ideas on law that you have seen or administrative codes that you've come across, we're certainly willing to look and reconsider. But as it stands now, we're not aware of that, and we must stick to our obligation, which is to transport students from home to school, from school or closest to home, and in other areas that the district so deems necessary, to help with the, the budgetary and other concerns that are at the fore from Tallahassee.
Well, I'd like to ask that Mr. Douglas try to work out some type of mutually beneficial scenario with you. I know that we have, I don't know where your children go when they leave you, but if they're, they would ordinarily be dropped off in outlying areas with no parental supervision, it would be counterproductive for the students, and I know we do that in many situations that, that we'd rather not do that to, and it would be, if, if he can work out something that's, that's, that's workable, I think, Mr. DeFranco, it would be possible, but it might not be by the beginning of school, we just have to...
Right, but maybe you could walk them to a certain...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, what I was thinking is, if they drop out on that side, that, you could have someone meeting them or have an off-duty deputy who stopped, you know, and let them walk across the street, but there's other, that'll be up for him to resolve, and I know that superintendent is right in that there are so many new VPKs and, and childcare facilities that you can't accommodate everybody, but if it is a situation that would be beneficial to the children who live in the outlying areas down around Clifton Road and all, I, I think we could probably see what he can work out, and if the rest of the board feels that way, I, I don't have a problem with him looking that...
And all due respect to Mr. Buckles and, and the rest of the board members there, it would be my recommendation to the superintendent, in the interest of being fair to everybody, is that, and we can try to work this out, but my recommendation at this point in time is that we do not pick up and drop off at daycare centers, because, again, financially, it's not in our best interest. And, and as Ms. Jorgensen said and Mr. Douglas said, I, I think we need to look out for taxpayer dollars, and I have no, I know daycare serve a great service in this community, but I, I, I don't think we should have to change routes, I don't think we should have to change the way we, I think, if we can work out a viable option, fine and dandy.
I would say the only viable option for any daycare in this county is if there is currently a bus stop within a few blocks of that daycare, that the daycare have someone there to meet the children and let them get off at the already predetermined bus stop and walk to the daycare with a daycare worker, then everybody wins. If there is nothing available along that stretch of highway, there's not much we can do about it, and Terry Lee, I was going to ask her about the other two daycares, are you familiar with where the other two daycares are? Is there a bus stop within so many blocks before or after the daycare, for either of those or for this one?
There is for the other one, not for this one, which you need to, but the board needs to keep in mind, they're all within two miles.
And again, we don't get paid for the children that we transport within those two miles, and we normally have not transported because we just don't have enough drivers and buses to do it. We can't purchase buses and we can't pay drivers if the state doesn't pay us.
Well, Mick, if we can just let Charlie Douglas work with Mr. Simons, get together and study just what the superintendent said, I think we can figure out a way to skin this cat, and, and it is, Phyllis, it was a good idea to do that, and I, I think it'll, maybe we can figure out how to do it. The two-mile ratio, years ago, we had plenty of money to, to do things like this, now it's not easy to do it, and it's not enough.
There isn't another district in the state that does that, they just don't do it, they don't even start it.
And we're at the...
Again, no good deed goes unpunished, but I would say, I've been at Melon Elementary in the afternoon and helped with pickup in the afternoon, and six daycare vans from six different daycares pull up there and pick up the children in the afternoon. Maybe it would be who view and the other two daycares to get together and purchase a van so that you could pick up at Middleton Bernie and drop off at the three daycares.
They, they may do that, but if Mr. Douglas get with Mr. Simons and try to work out a solution, I think maybe we can hear, hear by. Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
We're going to move along. Thank you. Okay, I don't have any cards, there were no public comment cards submitted, so we're moving along to the consent agenda. Like to ask if there are any members of the public who'd like to pull anything from the consent agenda. Board members? Ms. E. One? E. One? Ms. Cummings?
Looking at me in that time.
G. Two?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Um, Mr. Wright?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and I'm good. Like to entertain a motion? With the four of us, Mr. Buckles has taken a brief recess, but we'll go on.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items E. One and G. Two.
And I second it. Motion and second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Carrie's four-zero. Moving right along, item E. One, Ms. Crawford.
Debbie, I'm just, I have a question about the change from the media specialist to the teacher at QI Roberts, I know this is not the first one. I'm very concerned that we'll have schools without media specialists, and I know that, you know, they can use those allocations for whatever they want to use them for. I don't think it's a good precedent to set that we're not having media specialists in each of our schools, but especially at QI Roberts, which is a Cambridge school that needs a library and a certified librarian that can teach them research, they're going to be doing all kinds, hopefully, all kinds of research. Could you tell me how many schools we have that do not, will not have a media specialist this year?
Currently, I know of two for sure.
Okay.
Possibly a third.
Okay, too, too many. I, I just wanted to express my concern about that.
Absolutely, and I do understand, I would say typically you see this more in the smaller schools where they're really having to use their allocations to maximize every opportunity to work with students. So yes, I do understand and completely hear what you are saying concerning having a licensed, certified media specialist in every school, but sometimes the principals have to make those tough decisions, and unfortunately, this is one of those when you are a smaller school, that you have to weigh what is in the best interest of the program at the time.
The Cambridge program?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there ever any, the leadership at the school, I know that we, we're never centrally, administratively, making decisions centrally, so it's all site-based decision-making? So, do the principals ever come up with any type of reasons for their decisions like this, or is it just?
No, they honestly look at it and determine what is in the best interest of the mission at hand, and how they can best serve their students.
Right, because I, I mean, we made a strategic plan, we spent a lot of time with that, and reading is a main focus in our strategic plan, and anytime I feel like a media specialist is, is deleted from our schools, it's in direct violation of our strategic plan, and it really bothers me a lot, because I don't feel like it's giving the attention that we need to focus on as far as... Yeah, I mean, when you look at our strategic plan and the specific goals we have and, and reading and, and making lifelong learners, that's a main part of that, so I just, it's, I know it's a hard decision for the principal.
I would add, though, it's not that the media center's going to be closed, the media center still will be open at these facilities, and they're using other staff to manage it. Now, is it perfect? No.
That's okay in an elementary school, but when, when you've got Cambridge, that's a, a whole different ballgame.
I completely understand, and I know she...
But the courses, the courses in Cambridge are what's important, and if you've only got three hundred students, you're only allocated a certain number of teachers. Well, it's hard, you know, in the middle and high school, when you're offering different kinds of courses, and elementary is just straight, it's elementary, you know, one teacher and they teach all those subjects. If you're in a middle or a high school and you're trying to offer an additional class, an additional chemistry, or, or maybe physics, or something you don't normally offer that's not core and not required by the state, but you want to offer it to the students because there's an interest, but you don't earn enough money or enough teachers to be able to have that, unfortunately, they often look at the other positions that are considered instructional, which media is, and certainly I would prefer to have a full-time media specialist at every school, and we've talked at length with Rhonda about the allocations, but you only get what you, what you get, and we have to follow a comp plan where those allocations are concerned. And if you give an additional allocation to one, you got to give it to everybody, and there's not necessarily the need or the ability financially to do that.
Why would you give it to someone that didn't have a need for it?
Because the comp plan from the state says you have to.
Well, I, I understand, I'm sorry, Kathy, let me just make this one point. You know, you said it's, the courses are what are important, and to a certain extent, I agree with you, but I also know in Cambridge courses that research is a very big part of that curriculum, and if they don't have any, I mean, they can go in a library...
But the teachers that are requiring the research can teach them how to do it, and they can take them to the library and help them do it.
Let's hope so, let's hope so.
At that level, those teachers that she hires, yes, and, but I would suggest that you go out and see what's going on and talk to her and, and visit the school and look at the classes to get a better understanding of what's going on at any of the schools that have done this. It's not an easy decision, it's not something we want to do, but what you find in most of our schools, we have people that are not certified teachers that are absolutely amazing, and they just never went to college, unfortunately, and they have the skill and the ability, they just don't have the degree. So oftentimes, a principal will use them, such as in the library, so that they can use that particular position to add a teaching unit. You may have a fifth grade class that has five extra students, and everybody else is meeting class size, well, five extra in a class, whether it's fifth grade or any grade, is a strain, so, but you, that doesn't earn you another teacher, but you've decided to make all of the fifth grade classes a little bit smaller so that you can do more with them by adding another teacher, the only way you can do that is convert that media specialist and, and hire a teacher. There are a lot of reasons principals do it, and, and we try to let our principals who live at those schools all day, every day, make their decisions, so anytime you have a question or concern, please go out to the school and walk around, talk to the principal, talk to the kids, look at the classes, look at what's happening, to get a better understanding of what's going on, and then come on back, and we can talk about it again anytime during the year, and, and we can talk about making decisions a little bit differently if you want to, but go to the school first, talk to them and experience it.
Well, I didn't know that it was happening till I saw it on the agenda. I, I guess I'm confused. We keep learning, I keep learning at FSBA that the superintendent hires the people, the board controls the allocations, but you're saying, at the schools, we really don't, on the educational level, we really don't, there's some kind of law that we have to go by that we really have no control over.
The allocations are the number of teachers that each school earns based on the number of students they have.
And we don't have a choice?
No, that's, the state tells us that.
Well, you could add, you could add above and beyond.
Right, you can add one, so.
Yes.
I don't mean we don't have a choice, exactly.
No, you can, you can add, but now, Debbie, what would that do to the comp plan? If you've got, if you've got ten elementary schools like we have, and you decide for some reason that you have a particular school you want to give an additional teacher to...
You're supposed to keep it comparable to any school that is of the same kind, so in that situation...
Well, we don't have one.
Right, if it were in her example, in an elementary, you would need to do that. In the situation with QI, you may not have to because they are one in the...
One of a kind, yes.
Correct, but if you are looking at one where there's more than one of that type, then you would be looking at having to keep them comparable.
So it's not really strictly based on student enrollment and how many students...
That's where it starts.
Well, that's where it starts for us, now...
But any extra is where you're talking about, you have to give one to everybody.
It's called comparability in equity is what it's, the term.
I didn't realize.
And looking at Middleton Bernie, they are very different than any other elementary school in the county because of their numbers of ESOW students. So, if you decided you wanted to give them an extra teacher, you could do that as a board, and we would not have to then give anybody else one because there is no other school comparable. So, the law talks about comparability, so we, we're very careful to follow the law and make sure, and certainly, if you give a teacher to one school, you have every principal in here...
Oh, I'm sure.
They all think they're going to have nine million more students than they had last year, and they've all been calling us about more teachers. Until the students show up, we have what we have, the state says we'll have fifty-five students less this year than we had last year. We have been on a declining enrollment since nineteen, nineteen ninety-seven, and the state does it with their figures, they tell us that, you know, we, so, anyway.
Okay, so, um, do we not want to discuss this anymore, consider adding a media specialist?
No, you know, I want to, I want to go out there and see how it's going during the year.
I know how important, I agree with you, Jane, how very, very, very important being able to do researches once they get to college, and so often, they really can't. That's why we have a program in our schools, and of course, I can't think of it right now, but that's exactly what it teaches them, to stay organized and how to do logic, I think, I'm not sure, but how to do research.
Avid, yes.
That's it. That's what we're doing now, aren't we?
Right, and I...
Avid, yeah.
Absolutely, I know the superintendent, nobody wants to say, oh, well, we have to cut them, and no one likes that decision, and I'm, me and Ms. Crawford, and I think everyone agrees it's not easy, and we don't like it, it's just, but, has to be done. So you need a motion? I make a motion to approve item E. One.
I second it.
All those in, Terry, are you with us?
Yep.
I'm not sure, the phone is turned upside down. There's a motion and there's a second on the floor to approve the personnel allocations. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. No. I just think we need to have a media specialist there, but I will go visit too. Okay, Carrie's four-zero.
Five-one.
Excuse me?
Four-one with Terry.
G...
P-two.
Oh, four-one, yeah, did I say three-one? Whatever, I'm confused. I said I was confused.
I pulled item G. Two, the article about the First Coast Technical College, I was really excited to see it getting done so quickly, I just wanted a couple more, and of course, I'm sure Charlie's looked at it, he didn't pull it, so everything looked good for him, he's been part of the planning process with that, and I just didn't know of a start date, I see it starts first day of July, but I didn't know as far as the, the plan and, you know, the, the goal of when these students will be attending them.
We just got notification today that we have, well, we don't receive the six hundred We just got notification today that we have, well, we don't receive the 600,000. We get to pull down the money as we need it. We draw it down. And I got the notification from the Department of Education today. And I forwarded that on to Scott Getchel and he'll be working with First Coast Tech on that. One of the things that we have to do, the, the, they have, of course, an advanced culinary arts program that will need a cafeteria and kitchen area. Currently, the cafeteria and kitchen area at Mosley, the old Mosley campus, was gutted. There's nothing there, it's just stripped bare. Um, and we are going to have to renovate that in order for them to move in. And that's part of what this money is gonna be used for. We also have discovered that the tiles have asbestos. So, that's gonna have to be dealt with. That was something we weren't anticipating. And so, now that's gonna be an issue. So, it's got to be taken care of. Scott Getchel will be working with them on that. They also got some money, so they're gonna share in the expenses of helping us get everything like it should be. Their lease runs out in December, so it'll be December when they're moving in. But that gives us from now until December to make all the changes and repairs that they need to move into the building.
So, second semester, we might see some students over there?
I'm hoping that the second semester, we start our programs, yes.
Now, there's some, in, in the walkway, there's asbestos overhead, but they can encapsulate that. It won't be as expensive as, as total removal. And I did meet with the superintendent and our lobbyist the other day. And this is the first of a three-phase process. And we will be going for a million dollars this next year for the facility. So, uh, it's, it's gonna be a three-year process and then maybe a million the next year.
So, the whole, the whole school, First Coast Technical, so in, every student that they enroll will be, so even if they're not enrolled in our students, they'll still be on our campus, correct?
Unless it's heavy industrial, like welding, they'll be out at the barge port.
Okay, so welding will stay out there, but we're gonna have culinary arts, the...
It's the advanced culinary arts. So, those students taking culinary arts at their current school, when they've completed that, they can then take the advanced and, and continue. We can talk more about industry certification because we have a lot of kids that get industry certification. We hope to increase that with the programs that they're bringing.
Are the contractor, were we able to get the contract, the building contractor program this year or no?
She said she, it's construction. And she said she plans to start that and hopefully in January, so.
What about the, um...
Cosmetology?
Beauty parlor, yeah, cosmetology program.
As far as I know, they're bringing everything. And they're going to be able to introduce our students. Now, they, of course, have an application process. Our students have to meet that. I mean, certainly, you can't be making all Fs and think you're gonna enter that program. They, they are required by law also to, to guarantee a certain number of graduates and to find them jobs. That's why I'm really excited about this.
Well, I don't know if you've looked at their job placement, but it is wonderful.
It is.
It's very high.
Yes, and they are required to do that to continue to get money from the state. So, they're very serious about getting that done and they work very hard at it.
Not just in cosmetology, in every, every area.
Right, in every area, mhm.
I had a question, and I apologize, I don't have it up on my screen yet. However, there's a part where it says, um, we are going to provide clothing, materials, even a box lunch for our students, no? Cause it's in the...
Renee Huff is our Director of Career and Technical Education. And she has worked with this program in the past and will continue to in the future. I'll let her explain that to you.
Okay. This articulation agreement is just an articulation agreement that we've had with First Coast for, well, I've been doing this for 15 years. And now that we are paying tuition, they have updated the actual articulation agreement. We, this, we are not going to have to provide these things, but we give those students time to go get lunch. We will not be providing them, we provide the tuition and the books. There is a student fee that they will be having to pay in order to have their supplies because that pot of money ran out several years ago, where we used to be able to have enough money to help them with their supplies. First Coast Technical has said, when we met and worked on this agreement, that they do have some money there to assist our students that are going to be dual enrollment students.
And they have a lot of the supplies right there at the school for the students to purchase it there at a better price.
Yeah, it does say...
Do we have to do that?
Yeah, it says on box lunches and their, um, uniform. It's on page...
I don't have it in front of me.
Two, maybe?
On page two?
Let me find it again.
Because that's one of the things that we took out whenever we met.
Page...
A six.
A six, yeah.
Page six?
Two A six.
So, two A six is the number.
Two A six.
The very top line of...
Or permit students to purchase lunch off-campus with personal funds.
So, it's either or.
There is no food service available on Putnam County campuses, which is the Putnam County campuses for First Coast. So, we changed it, I mean, it was to say, and now it says, or permit. So, we do allow the students, like the students that are enrolled in the welding program, um, they leave school at 11:30 and they have to be at school at First Coast Technical by 12:45. So, that gives them time to leave school and also to purchase lunch.
Well, it just says shall, though, I don't like that word. Pe, pe, you know, we shall provide a free bo, box.
I, I just want to make sure I understand that. There's never a scenario where we would be providing the box lunch, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, what we can do is just strike out through that clause and say, Putnam County School District shall permit Putnam County School District students to permit, uh, to purchase lunch off-campus with personal funds.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Mhm.
Okay.
Okay, and there was one more thing, and I'm sorry, I had... It was where it says what we're gonna pay. And I read it six times and I really, I'm sorry.
Two dollars and 33 cents a credit, one of their, of their hour.
It doesn't say that here. It says something about FTE and...
What page is that?
This, it's in two places, but I'm gonna find it, hold on.
It's compensation, um, 3A? Is that what you were looking at, Ms. Jordanson?
I'm sure it is, 3A. Yes, compensation.
Okay. The student, we receive the FTE for those students that are, because it's a dual-enrolled-type program.
Right, I understand.
So, we receive the FTE and then we pay First Coast Technical the tuition.
I understand that. But then it says something about base tuition rate per hour instruction shall be paid by us to them.
And it's, it's two dollars and 33 cents. They just, this is...
Of half the FTE? That's what I'm saying, I just don't understand it.
They will not receive FTE.
We get...
We get the FTE and we pay them...
By the hour.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, understood, thank you very much.
Just like at, at St. John's, we pay $71.98 a credit hour, but we receive the FTE with the way that we put it on their schedule.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Douglas, I don't see food service here, but going back to the box lunch, it may just be a, there may be some reason that's in there in case it's a federal law or if students on free or reduced lunch that we, we have to say we're, we're providing lunch. You know, I, I don't know, in, in case a child doesn't want it to avail.
And we make it to where students leave or they eat lunch at school and then they leave, you know?
Or they could grab it and take it.
Yeah, I mean...
Grab it and take it with them.
That's just my concern that they're...
I would leave it in there because there is the ability for a child to take...
If they want a lunch, they can get a lunch.
If they want a lunch, they can get a lunch. We provide free lunch to all of our students.
We would have to provide that lunch.
You're saying that they have to go to a school to get the lunch?
Well, they're already there.
They're already there and if they leave...
Before they would leave.
Yes.
Yes.
If they've attended a certain amount of time, they would be, by federal law, entitled to be fed by us.
They're homeschooled before they...
And I think that's what that clause would be for.
Create a situation where they're at the, the other campus and sitting down and saying, where's my lunch?
That's what I was picturing, but now that you explained it that way.
Where's my Jerry's Chicken Box?
It's not, it's not uncommon to transport food. I mean, it's, you know, it's...
What do we do for charter schools?
No, it wouldn't be, we may, I don't know.
We just want to create a situation where we're mandated where the technical colleges...
And we are not also because it says, or permit them. So, we can permit them, it doesn't say that, um, it says that we can permit, we can, or permit them, so.
That we put, we had them add that.
But that is, um, get the lunch or they can go by their own.
You have to, at least to comply with federal law.
Yes. The students at Interlock and High School, for instance, go to school from first period to third period. And then they get their lunch and then they leave to be able to get to welding.
Gotcha.
But they have that time there at the school to be able to have lunch. And the same at Polacka. Yes, ma'am, Polacka High School also.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Well, it sounds good. I'm glad we were able to work out with the payments because I know when, I think her name is Sandra, was here, when we were looking, talking about the lease, the problem was they weren't getting reimbursed. I'm really glad that we were, we were able to make an agreement with them so that hopefully more of our students will be able to attend. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And one last question, how long is the lease? I, or...
The lease is 20 years.
Twenty, twenty, but it has a recent...
This is one year renewable automatically, I believe.
Okay, perfect, okay, great, thank you. I make a motion to approve item G2.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Um, before I call for vote, Mr. Wright, you okay?
Yep, no, I'm good.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Okay, moving right along, we are now in emergency session. I don't know if I can find the emergency notes. Thank you so much, you're on the floor.
I won't buy that, there it is.
Okay. We have three items on our emergency agenda. First is 2015-16 Personnel Allocation Change Number Three, 3.12 and 3.13. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carries five zero. Emergency item number two, School Food Service Petty Cash, 2015-2016. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Our last emergency item is an overnight trip for Polacka High School's FFA.
So moved.
Justification, expla, explanation, time-sensitive.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Moving out of emergency session and back into regular session. We're on the discussion. Under Old Business, Remove From The Table Personnel Matter, Termination Of Employee. Is there a motion to remove the matter from the table?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero.
If I could, um, make a recommendation to the board, at this time, there is no need to act on the tabled item because the employee has made the decision to retire.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
It's none.
A nice compromise. Okay, so, we're not gonna, is the board agreed not to act on item two?
Correct.
Okay, we're gonna move on to New Business. Discussion Input And Action On Purchase Of Property At 120 Finney Trailer Park Road In Polacka, Florida.
So moved.
What are you moving, that we do it? I want to discuss it, I don't even know what it is.
Okay, it's, it's property adjacent to Polacka High School that has been recommended that we purchased to help increase our, our area there and...
Okay, Mr. Roach will do it.
It has, um, the, the good thing about this piece of property that we want to acquire, first of all, it's under the assessed value that we, we offered and the person has already accepted. The second thing is, it gives us access to the backside of Polacka High School from Highway 20, which we didn't have before. This will allow us to clean off this piece of property and it's right next to a, a facility that we use for a wrestling room and a training room for our wrestlers and a soccer area. We can have our kids park in this cleared-out parking lot or in a, in an area. And, um, they can, we can put a gate in there for the coaches to let them in, let them out. Uh, they won't be parking along Highway 20. They won't be parking in places where they shouldn't have been parking before. Uh, we'll have a driveway, we'll have access to this property. It'll be in and out every day.
So, is it not down that little dirt road beside the daycare that goes to the road to Polacka High?
Um, it's, there's the, the church.
Yes.
It's right past the church. Jade Lane is, actually looks like a yard, but it's actually a road that goes back to that property.
Could you get to like the practice softball field back in there?
Mm-hmm, you can get back to all that.
Okay, I've been down in there.
Yeah, you can get back to all that. Well, Mr. Headstrom and I used to chase skippers up and down that area in my truck. But anyway, um, it's a, it's, it's, it's gonna be a, a nice asset for Polacka High School. Um, there's one other piece back there, but it just didn't work out. So, this is the piece of property we really wanted.
11,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to renew your motion?
I make a motion, we approve the superintendent's recommendation on, on purchasing the property at 120 Finney Trailer Park Road, Polacka, Florida.
I second it. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda. Discussion And Consensus To Advertise Amendment To Policies Per Neola Update 15-1. Bylaws Number 0124, 0167, and Policy Number 1030, 1120.11, 2120, 2260, 2271, 2370, 2370.01, 2421, 2432, 2460, 2520, 2623, 3120.11, 3130, 4120.11, 5111.01, 5330.01, 5516, 5780, 5858, 3083, 3083, 5084, 6285, 4085, 5087, 19211. And copies of these changes are available for view by any of the public members who might be interested in the superintendent's office.
Advertise?
Advertise. Advertise.
Advertise. Advertise. Okay, we have five.
I'm sorry.
You missed number two.
Point of order, yeah, number two.
Oh, sorry, we'll go back.
We'll go back.
Okay, we just did number three. I'm very sorry. Just trying to move things along.
No, that's good. I just didn't want to forget it.
Discussion and consensus to advertise adoption/deletion of policies per NEOLDA updates 15-1 and 15-2. Adoption of policies 2252, 2461, 2800, 5330.03, 8390, 8470, and deletion of policies 1122.04 and 2260.02. And again, for those members of the public who'd like to see them, copies are available in the superintendent's office.
I'd like to make a motion. We advertise?
I don't think it's a motion.
Or just advertise.
Advertise?
Advertise.
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 Five advertisers. Go ahead and do so. Item number four, discussion and consensus to advertise amendment to bylaws and policies per NEOLDA update 15-2. Bylaw number 0167.1 and policy numbers 1122, 1122.01, 1242, 1362, 1430.01, .12260, 2260.01, 3122, 3122.01, 3362, 3430.01, 4122, 4122.01, 4362, 4430.01, 5350, 5517, 5780, 5830, 6100, 6320, 8405, and 9211.
Advertise?
Advertise.
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 Five advertisers, and once again, copies available in the superintendent's office for those members of the public that would like to view these changes. And that brings us to board member reports. Mr. Remote Control Terry Wright, would you please start? Mr. Wright?
He hung up. He probably hung up.
He probably went back to Disney World. Terry? Yeah, well, I'll leave it like that. Mr. Buckles?
The only thing I wanted to, I had a couple of things, but first of all, I'm looking forward to our relationship with First Coast Tech. We've certainly, we're very fortunate. You figure, last year as a board, we all worked together and we received a $1 million appropriation that's helping correct a longstanding grade configuration problem in South Putnam. Although, when you work on that, other situations arise that we'll take care of down the road. We received $600,000 this session, and we're looking at a million over the next two years, a million, and then the third phase three to do this, and it works out with part of the governor's jobs creation program. And he will be here, I think, Ms. Chriswell, September 1st in town. We'll probably be visiting with him. But I think, I think we're in good stead to pick up the remaining dollars over the period of time, so we're looking forward to that. And I had a conversation with the aide for Congressman Ron DeSantis, and he, Ms. Chriswell invited them to come by, and I think we may receive a visit from him at some point. He'll tour the schools and see what we're doing because a lot of this stuff that's federal is really, you know, the tail wagging the dog, and we need, we need all the help we can get in Washington, and I'm thankful that you did contact them and we're gonna set something up. But other than that, I did attend a training that we had for administrators the other morning. I was very pleased to see the entire group of principals and staff working together to try to develop a common goal in helping to improve the lives of our children, and I think we're off to a good start. So with that, I'll pass. I'm done.
Ms. Buckles?
I want to say thank you to our staff. I know we've worked, and we have another meeting next week about the insurance committee and moving forward with working with our new broker of record and offering the best things available to our employees, and that's a huge, huge job. We have a great committee that's, everybody's involved, and it's, the schools are meeting, spending time, researching, and I appreciate all that hard work because I feel that's a goal of everyone to have that insurance is a major concern for everybody involved, whether it's disability life or health insurance. So, I do appreciate all the staff that spent lots of time spending, doing what we can to provide those options to our employees. I want to speak again to the South Putnam Transportation. Again, I know that everyone on this board and the superintendent want what's best for our kids. Of course, we want to do whatever we can to do the, give these children a learning opportunity, and I would just continue to echo the thought of whatever we can do, we are gonna do. And it's not something that it's across the board and say, well, this has gotta, you know, if there's, whatever we can do, if it's three kids, I mean, with the situations we've been in, this horrific things we've heard about, our students that are involved, every kid that could be adult supervised, that if we can get those kids on the bus, then we're gonna do it. And we, we want those kids in a safe environment, and we've had too many awful things happen to our kids, and we just pray for the families that have been involved with these things in our county. It's just heartbreaking, and we never know what we can do, but as a school board and as any educator here knows, we're gonna do whatever we can to, to provide a safe environment. So I'd encourage not to get caught up in the political battle of, well, this daycare can't get kids here, and this one, well, we, we want everything equal because if we can have that many kids supervised, that if we can't do it for all 100, but we can do it for 75, well, golly, that's 75 extra ability to have these kids with supervision. So I just feel strongly that we're gonna do whatever we can, and our transportation director has a heart that he's going to do what's in the best interest of the kids, and I totally have that confidence in him is, is that doing whatever we can in that situation. Thanks. Again, we're feeding them too.
Yes.
August 12th, free groceries. It was great last time. Miller Intermediate, that's a perfect example that we do care about our South Putnam community. We do care about these kids and these families, so this was something that we partnered with. So the school graciously opened up our facility. The superintendent allows us to come. This truck brings wonderful fresh fruits, vegetables, groceries, meats, cheeses, and these parents, these families get to take groceries home. So anyone that would like to participate, please come August 12th, 9:00 a.m.
I'm next.
Yes.
I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to go to Nashville with our archery team. It was a wonderful experience.
Were you the target?
Well, we stayed in a house with 22 middle school students and soon to be high school students, and I was about to lose my mind when we left, but anyway, they were wonderful. They were absolutely wonderful. They did really well. They had a great showing at the tournament, and we have one student, Nathan Futch, who along with the coach, Lucas Bennett, will be leaving Thursday to fly to New York because he qualified for the finals in the 3D archery shooting, and that's where they shoot those big plastic deer and goats and things like that. And our team did really well in that part. So you know, we have all those boys that love to hunt, you know, they did, and the girls did great too. I was so proud of them. But the next thing I want to say, and it's really to our teachers, and I can only find Mark, our only teacher here, but this is for you and all of the rest of the teachers in Putnam County and all the staffs that are going back to work next week. I just want to wish you a wonderful year. I know what you do is the hardest job in the world. I know that because I've done it. I know that most of you didn't really get much of a summer because many of you have been either at home or in your classrooms getting ready for the upcoming year. Many of you spent the summer in taking college courses or workshops so you could recertify to be able to continue doing this challenging job. So let me go ahead and thank you for everything that you do. Staying late for meetings and programs, sponsoring clubs, writing lesson plans, grading papers, piloting new programs, instituting new standards, wiping runny noses and tears, and disciplining bad behavior, and spending lots of your own money for your classroom. I could go on and on. I'll cut it off there. I know how important your job is, and what you do matters. Teachers matter more than anything. They matter more than the curriculum that we teach, more than class size, and more than the money that we spend on each student. A single teacher can shape the course of a young person's life and future, and you matter, and we're counting on you to give our students the best that you have, and I want you to know that you can count on us to support you as you step into your classrooms this year and touch lives, and I hope you have a wonderful year.
Thank you.
Very nice, Ken.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright, I'm gonna see if you're there one last time. He's gone. He's gone. Back to the pool.
He's walking on the beach.
Yeah. Well, I really have nothing to report since I've spent most of the time since the last meeting, recovery from, recovering from a very successful, thank you God, shoulder replacement surgery. So I'm gonna pass it to our board attorney.
Things are well on the legal side of things.
Here we go.
We are working hard on a lot of legal matters right now for obviously confidential reasons. I'll leave it at that, but there's a lot going on.
You're not bored?
Not bored with the board.
Okay, thank you. Madam Superintendent?
I have just a few things briefly. Probably this morning on the news or on social media, you heard that there was a seven-year-old girl reported missing around 9:00 a.m. this morning, and I have to tell you, anytime a child is missing, it's, it's very stressful on everybody, and the Palaca Police Department got in touch with Travis Weaver. We opened a command center. We worked with certainly the Palaca Police Department and the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, K-9 teams and firefighters, and actually, the girl was found within an hour, so we were very fortunate this time. But I just wanted to let you know that that happened, and everybody went into action quickly. It went smoothly. It was amazing what you can do when you need to do with all the agencies working together, so that, that was really good this morning. A couple of other things, I will have eventually Ashley McCool come from Mosley Elementary to give you this information, or a little more information, but they did a grant and they were selected as a national champion school with the National Foundation for Governors' Fitness Councils. And so, only three schools in the state of Florida were awarded, so we're really excited about this. They will come in and they will create a $100,000 athletic facility for the students at Mosley in their existing PE building. This is done through national sponsors such as Nike, Coca-Cola, and Tough Stuff Fitness Equipment. There will be a formal ribbon cutting ceremony in October that you will be informed about once it has all been done, but they will come in with their big trucks and they will do the renovation and the equipment, and, and it's amazing, and they are really excited at Mosley about this. But I will have Ms. McCool, the principal, come and give you an update at the next meeting so that you'll know what's going on, and certainly for the ribbon cutting in October. I hear that they even have celebrities come to these ribbon cuttings, so we'll see. That's really exciting. We also had at Overturf Sixth Grade Center today, they, they do this Rising Up thing every year that is just the cutest, neatest thing. If you ever have an opportunity to go, they invite, of course, all the fifth graders from all five of the elementary schools that will be entering the school, and they bring them in and they do fun activities. They start in the auditorium. Their guidance counselor, Jamila Theobald, does this, and she is just amazing. She told them today, she's the positive princess, so we're gonna call her princess from now on, and she did a wonderful job. The teachers that volunteer their time to do this, and our director of secondary, Ed Tonia Whitehurst, was there this morning, took a group of students, and they had a big time. Kiwanis did their lunch.
Yes, we did.
Jane, so thank you for your Kiwanis club who did the lunch today, and that was really successful. It's really exciting. It's a unique experience for these students, and it starts their school year off right. Also, we did principal training all last week, every day, including Friday. They got a lot of information, and they were very positive and upbeat. We're really excited about the new year. Helen Muir, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, along with Laura France, our Director of Elementary Ed, put all of that together and had some awesome great speakers, including a day, a FACA Day, Florida Association of School Administrators, and again, they, they made a lot of contacts, learned a lot of things, and had a lot of things they already knew reinforced, so it was a great week. And the teacher training that they've done so far this summer, God bless them, we've had about 400 teachers of our 700 that have participated in training this summer. It has been a busy summer and lots of training, and so we're really excited about moving forward this year with all that they've learned and the strategies that they're gonna use in their classrooms this year, the new lesson plan format that we're planning to use, and principals were trained in this too, so we're really excited. We also have upcoming next Thursday, if you have time, between 3:00 o'clock and 5:00 o'clock, Georgia Pacific and Terry Haddaway from Georgia Pacific has arranged for our fourth and fifth graders who actually have curriculum purchased by Georgia Pacific to use at the St. John's River Center downtown. So what they are doing is hors d'oeuvres and everything for teachers in fourth and fifth grade from 3:00 o'clock to 5:00 o'clock. Now, they've invited any teachers and any staff that wants to come, board members, you can stop in. We were reminded that the fire marshal says we can only have 77 people in the building at a time, 100 on top though.
We could take two.
And so, if you want to stop by to see what all they're doing, GP is going to put this on for these fourth and fifth grade teachers, but Terry called me today and said, please, you know, anybody can stop by during that time, but particularly fourth and fifth grade teachers, and Rodney Simons, our Director of Transportation, will provide buses to the outlying areas if they would prefer to ride a bus, and he's working with Laura France on that, so that if any teachers would like to ride a bus in, we can do that for them. So we're really excited about that. If you have an opportunity to come, please do, especially if you haven't seen the center yet. It is really unique and awesome for kids. Georgia Pacific has really done a great job with it, and the city, of course, will be taking it over. Also, the last thing that I have, we have taken pictures of all of the schools in the county and plan to frame them and put them up on the walls in here, but this wall back here, I've had Dr. Surrancey from Jenkins Middle School has called and says he has an art teacher that would love to do a mural, and I said, well, that's not for me to decide. I would really rather take that to the board to see if they want anything up there on that wall, and so this isn't really for a vote, this is for, just for you to think about. We've had an offer from an art teacher who would involve students and other art teachers and students in the community, if you're interested in that. If not, we could just put the logo, or we could put nothing. It's really up to you, so think about it a little bit, and maybe we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to talk about.
You could put David's picture back there.
Yeah, you could put my picture.
And darts.
That'd keep.
I think I'm archery practice.
That'd keep all the bugs out. You know, years ago, Nancy Alvers painted the old boardroom at the district office and had murals of children and all behind the board, but that was painted over after quite a few years.
I'd just be afraid with the video, you know, the television and all that, it might get too busy.
I did, I did say that to them. I appreciated their offer, and it was a nice thought, but there may be other places like the walls inside here that, that we could do, but they wanted me to just mention it to you, so I said I would.
Maybe we can find them another show.
Okado.
Yeah, there's walls all over there. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Rodney has something.
The ending time for Putnam Edge needs to be 2:10 instead of 2:05 to reflect the same time to see a longer term when we transport that. That was not put on that, that last calendar.
Do they know?
I just got that information. Sergeant Douglas.
Do they know?
Is that from?
Ms. Parsons gave me that information.
Okay, so we can get it on the list.
I just want to make sure that when the list went out, it was all the same and there weren't any issues.
Can we have permission to, because we do need to publish these, can we have permission? Can we do that?
Better ask Mr. Douglas.
Oh, you can publish the new times after the fact. We'll prove it, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
But since they do their own times, correct? So it really doesn't matter.
Yes.
We're just publishing that situation, just that information to help out.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to get it correct.
I know. That's why I wanted to come up here. Thank you.